Good evening, welcome to the December 9th City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of November 25th.
So move.
Next up is the public comment period.
At this time, if there is any member of the audience that would like to speak on something that's on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do that. There will not be an opportunity to after. Sir?
Sean Mackel, 18 Green Street. I am here speaking upon the Council Order 24331 of the zoning subcommittee report. I'm here to discuss the 21 Green Street proposed project. I've been here before, I've talked to many groups talking about just the building is too big as it's being proposed for Green Street. It's the wrong size, the wrong context, and more importantly, it's where it sits in the street, it's going to block out all the sun. I just gave the speech to the last group. This is the shadow study from, that the architect put together. Now, he just showed us one that was a little more up to date, but this is the one that was submitted and was submitted to the public. So I mean, this is what we have to react to. That's a little frustrating that we're not up to speed. But anyway, and looking at that, they were using plant, project, they were using page north, not true north, for their shadows. So when they say this is the 3:00 PM sun creating a 3:00 PM shadow, that's 100% incorrect. All right? In looking at this, I'll get this Google map, there's north. If you orient it the same way as the building, you can see there's north down there. North is this way. Using that, if you rotate the sun and the shadows, 3:00 PM sun hits the building of this, this is the 3:00 PM shadow. It completely engulfs Green Street and its neighbors. Now, if you look in red, this is south, this is sunset, this is the shadow arc that this five-story building will create on Green Street and its residents. It's too big for this area. It's going to make life, quality of life miserable, specifically for the person right next door. Now, I understand that, you know, the sun in the winter, the shadows are long, summer they get a little shorter. This house next door at five stories, the proposed at five stories, it will be in constant shade. Imagine if that was your house. Imagine if you had to resell your house and say, hey, buyer, you're going to live in shade. That sounds like a hardship that this new building is creating for the neighboring residences. All right? That's a real, that's a fact, Jack. Now, this is where I live, 18 Green Street. You can see at sunset, as the sun goes, it completely covers my house. Before I get to that, this is my house across the street. This is, looking down Green Street, and I've drawn in the proposed building. You can clearly see that the sun is just blocked out completely by this five-story building. Now, let me just pause for a second. I understand there'll be a building here. Five stories is what I'm upset with. It's too tall. It's too tall. All the neighboring buildings, all the neighboring residences, they're not buildings, they're single-family residences, are two stories. This is a monster in a sea of normal people. Normalcy. And specifically, take a look at this telephone pole here. This essentially is the corner of the building. You can see its shadow. The shadow completely covers this whole site. This is another picture. Sun, telephone pole, shadow, all of this is in shade. All of this is in shade. And you can see this is sunset, this white fence represents the footprint of the building. It completely blocks out the sun. All right? And what's frustrating is, this is the applicant's place of business. All right? He knows what's going on. He submitted these sun studies, as shown before, as if that's real. It's not real. And lastly, this is the Ring Cam from my house across the street. Clearly see it, that's the proposed building, that's my house. This is at four o'clock, telephone pole, shadow, all of Green Street. This whole half, Green Street and all of this is in shadow. Half an hour later, 4:35, I'm now in shadow. I mean, this is crazy. We're just, we'll all be living in this building's shadow. It's the wrong size, wrong height. Look, it's the height we're worried about. Three stories, four stories, five stories is unacceptable, and it's just wrong for this area. I implore you guys to take that into consideration. I know that a lot of you just said yes in the zoning committee, but again, now that I'm talking to the whole group, please, please, imagine if you lived next to this monster. The sun is blocked out. You're on another planet. Thank you for your time. I apologize for my frustration, but it is very, very frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Ma'am?
Amanda McGordy, 18 Green Street. I just would like to just put this on the record. I get the vibe here that it really didn't matter what anybody said, this was going to pass anyway, but I'd at least like to just put it out there that I absolutely think the building is too large, and I still have yet to have anyone explain why we're going leaps and bounds above to allow someone to build a building that's completely out of bounds of any kind of rules or regulations or requirement of what is allowed to be built there. But it is what it is at this point. So all that I would ask is if there could be efforts made to enforce the parameters of the special permit as were read into the record. This is an individual and a family who don't follow rules. I work in federal law enforcement, and I'm surrounded by people who don't follow rules all day. I'm pretty familiar with how their minds work, and if they think they can get away with something, they're going to try to do it. And that is absolutely what will happen here. There's a number of adjacent properties that they own, they don't follow any rules, the entire rear yards of all of their homes are asphalted, no permits, just doing whatever they want to do. I really hope that some of the things that are promised in this are followed through with the veterans housing, I've already spoke to. I don't think they will, and I know they're going to try to enforce that, and I really hope they're successful in enforcing that at least. But there's also a lot of parameters that it's supposed to be happening, and I don't think those will be followed either because these are not trustworthy people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public comment period? Name and address for the record, sir, and which issue will you be speaking on tonight?
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street. I'd actually like to speak on two projects, the one on Green Street and the one on, is it Sentinel Ave? I think that's how you say it. Central? Centennial? I want to apologize, I'm a flawed man, and I want to apologize to the council, and I want to apologize to the people doing these projects. Two weeks ago, I came up here and I let my frustration out on the council and my frustration on the people doing these projects because I would like to see more ownership opportunities in the city of Revere, single families, townhouses and condos, and I took that frustration out on these projects. I actually think they're pretty good projects. I think we need housing. I think Revere needs to lead the way in housing so that we can help out other people that don't have a place to live, they need places to rent. I understand people can't afford single-family homes, and I apologize for coming up here and disingenuously speaking against both of these projects. I am in favor of them.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment period? Seeing and hearing none, we will close then. Regular order of business.
Counselor item number three, motion presented by Councilor Janino that the City Council award a certificate of merit to firefighter Louis J. Iovine in recognition of his retirement after 39 years of commendable public service at Central Fire, letter company two, protecting and serving the residents of the city of Revere. City of Revere certificate of merit, in acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and meritorious public service, special recognition is hereby accorded to firefighter Louis J. Iovine, City of Revere Fire Department. In recognition of your retirement from 39 years of commendable public service on the City of Revere Fire Department, Central Fire Station, ladder company two, in which during your service you exhibited the courage to act, the ability to perform, and the desire to serve above and beyond the call of duty to protect and serve the residents of the city of Revere. And whereas firefighter Iovine's family has sacrificed many precious hours of family time over the course of his career to ensure the safety of all Revere residents, therefore, this certificate of merit is accorded here too. A witness whereof, the certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens, this ninth day of December in the year of our Lord 2024 and the Independence of the United States of America, the 248th. Signed by Mayor Patrick M. Keefe Jr., Anthony Cogliandro, City Council President, and myself, Ashley Melnick, City Clerk.
When you think of Central Fire, you think of Louis. Louis has been on Broadway for almost 40 years plus. He was there as a kid, growing up with his father as a fireman. Louis took over. How's that? Louis took over. He was in the ladder truck his whole career. And if anyone deserves recognition, this is the man right here. Thank you.
We're going to be holding off on item four. We're waiting on two of the recipients, so Madam Clerk, if we could take up item number five, please.
Counselor item number five, motion presented by Councilors Garino Sawaya and Hermio that the City Council present a certificate of commendation to Lorena Escalero in recognition of her work as the City of Revere's conservation agent and community development planner.
Lorena. Lorena has been instrumental in advancing key initiatives for the city of Revere. As the first conservation agent in over a decade, she provided critical support to the Conservation Commission. She led community engagement for the Walk Bike Roll Survey, achieving record-breaking participation with over 800 responses. Lorena played a pivotal role in establishing 240R smart growth districts and ensuring compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. She serves as a liaison to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, driving its first strategic projects in overseeing the successful 20-unit affordable home ownership lottery. Her efforts also secured multiple grants to advance housing, transportation, and mixed use development goals. Always a team player. Lorena brought optimism and dedication to shaping Revere's future. She will be greatly missed, and we wish her the best of luck in her future endeavors. If Texas doesn't pan out, and doesn't seem like the right fit, Revere, Massachusetts will gladly welcome you back.
You can read it, sure.
Oh, wait, there's more. Well, first, my very brief statement. When Councilor Garino Sawaya offered to have me added to this motion, I was really excited. For the geeks on the council, the nerds, although many of them are, there are many geeks and nerds here, the work that Lorena has been doing in her tenure here is so important to ensure that we're running our city well, that we are ensuring that we have workforce housing so that we can keep our families here. And that's the type of work that I think she's committed to, that many of us on this council are committed to, and so a true representation of a Revere native, and we're very appreciative. And so I'll read this little thing here. So, City of Revere, Massachusetts, certificate of commendation in recognition of your dedicated service and exemplary contributions to the city of Revere and your role as urban planner and conservation agent in the Office of Planning and Community Development. And whereas your expertise in climate resiliency, land use, and housing has been instrumental in facilitating critical planning efforts that will continue to enrich our community and inspire future projects and initiatives to create a more sustainable and vibrant future for the city of Revere. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Lorena Escalero. The City of Revere, on behalf of the residents of the city of Revere wishes you the very best in, I'm sorry, the City Council on behalf of the residents of the city of Revere wishes you the very best in your future endeavors and presents this certificate of commendation on this ninth day of December in the year of our Lord 2024 of the Independence of the United States of America, the 248th. Signed by Ashley Melnick and Anthony Severino Cogliandro, Council President.
Thank you.
Counselor item number six, the Chief of Health and Human Services will appear before the City Council to provide an update on the city's warming center.
Hello. Lauren Buck, 281 Broadway, Director of Public Health. I was asked to come before you today to give you an update on the status of our emergency warming center for Revere. Since the last time I presented to you all, our plans have changed a little bit, hopefully for the better, taking into account some feedback we received the last time I was here. So I'll just run through some of the plans that we have, and if there's any questions, I can hopefully answer some of them. The last time I was here, we were planning on using a location on Revere Street. With the help of the mayor, we were able to secure hopefully a better location. The American Legion building right across the way here at 249 Broadway is going to be our potential location for the warming center. This will allow us to increase our capacity from the last two years that we've ran the warming center from 15 patrons or customers or, you know, people who use the warming center per night to 24, which is a great expansion of services. Our start date will be either January 1st or January 6th, depending on the holiday and if we can get in to the building after some pre-planned events they have, to March 31st. This also represents an expansion of services for about a week more of service time than we had the last two years. Our times will be consistent, we'll be open from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. At this point, we're still in our RFP process, but we do have one bid for our operator, and it's housing families who successfully run our warming center the last two years, and they are our bid on the RFP for this project. And I will just say, you know, our plan is contingent on, the last time I was here, I talked to you about appropriating some funding from the opioid abatement funding. After talking with the state, and just out of an abundance of caution, we have decided to not use that funding, and instead, the state opened up through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, a one-time grant for municipalities or organizations who are operating sheltering or warming center operations. And so we applied and were cautiously optimistic that we will hopefully receive that funding, and so that will be our main source of the funding instead of the opioid abatement funding. And the last thing I'll say too is, you know, we've been running our warming center for the last two years. Malden has been running a warming center for eight-ish, nine years, and so we communicate with them on a, you know, annual basis about their operations, about our operations. But the great thing to notice is also, in last year, Somerville opened their warming center for the first time, they're operating again this year, and for the first time, Chelsea will be opening a warming center contingent on the same grant that we applied for. So I think these operations are expanding to our community, which is, a community is surrounding us, which is a really great thing, and we all regularly communicate about these projects, and we've been communicating about them this year as well. That's it.
Thank you very much, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much for coming back. I would sincerely like to thank Mayor Keefe for, he knew how visibly upset I was for where this was projected to go, and I was completely caught off guard that it was going on Revere Street, to be honest with you. But your initiative and the mayor's initiative to find a more feasible space for the warming center, which is greatly needed in the city of Revere, is really greatly appreciated, and thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lauren, this is great, great information. Not only is it great news to support the people that really need it, I think it's a great partner in the American Legion, showing that they're still supporting the community as well. It provides them some upneeded rehabs inside the building, and it's just, it's a great thing to hear. Any way that we could facilitate any help with the cost of this, please let us know. If that's what it comes to, then we'll have to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lauren, I think this is a great location, it's wonderful, it's not really near, you know, residential, which we had in the past, and we had problems. I think the planning was great on this, and congratulations, this is a great, great location. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lauren, thanks so much for being here, and thank you to you and your department for all you do for the homeless population. It's definitely warranted, and you know, as you know, I worked at the senior center the first year it ran, and I could see it was definitely something that was needed in Revere. I'm just curious, will there ever be a set location for this? Do you think the Legion is that location? I know it's bounced around the first couple of years.
Yeah, it's a great question. We are hoping that this is going to be a long-term solution for us. It has bounced around the last couple of years. I hope it can stay there, and I hope it ends up being as good of a location as we think it will be, specifically for many reasons, but really, it's because, as I've told you guys at the council before, you know, the operator really looks for a single level place, an operation, because having two levels increases the amount of staff capacity that the operator needs. There's wheelchair accessibility already, which is really great. There's bathrooms, there's the things that we need. And then finally, it just allows us to have more people per night, which is really a great thing, and it gets, our numbers now will be fairly consistent with both Malden and Somerville in terms of how many their capacity is. So that's like a really, it's a great thing that we can have more people, so hopefully we can, we can continue there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hermio?
Hi, Lauren. This is very exciting, as you know, I'm a big fan of your work. Also, I'm going to go on a limb here and probably, and say that Ira probably had something to do with this, I know he's a member of the American Legion, and so really appreciate his leadership on this. You know, warming center is a great, it's a great thing. It's also a stopgap for the increasing housing crisis that we're facing, right? And we know that if we can build stock and we can create workforce housing in our city, you know, legitimate workforce housing that houses families as well, because we're pricing out our own families here, we can find a long-term solution for this. Of course, this will continue to be a need, just because we are a community that has that need as a working-class community. I do have a question about the one-time grant, there are a few questions about the one-time grant. Do we have a number on that, a figure on that? For this year?
We haven't received confirmation that we've gotten it yet. I'm very hopeful. So this grant is specific, it's kind of, it's perfect for exactly what we put on here. The grant, like I said, the grant is put on by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, who specifically kind of oversee the traditional shelter programming throughout the state. And so in the bidders conference, it's kind of a, it seems like it's going to be a year after year type of grant where they really want municipalities to start doing this type of work, so they're trying to make it easier for us to do it, but I haven't received final confirmation that I've gotten it yet. So once I do, I can communicate about that.
Sounds good. Well, thank you. I mean, we're hoping, I don't know if a letter from the council would be something that would be helpful, it sounds like you've already submitted, and it's well within, in the process, but if there's anything we can do here, I think we'd be happy to offer that up for you.
I hope we have a very strong application, because we have two years of experience that I think will hopefully play into, you know, their decisions. And we have, the operator that, you know, we typically have used in the last two years housing families also has, you know, strong connections to that, so hopefully we're in a good position. But thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, thank you, Counselor Hermio, for mentioning my activity in this, and, you know, I was involved in it right from the beginning, and, you know, having to deal with the Legion itself, and the Legion is giving up a lot, you know, for three months. And thank God, this grant will help them offset what they're losing, you know, and the city has already started to upgrade the building. A lot of the things that are needed for safety are in the building from when COVID was handling the building, AEDs and fire extinguishers and things like that. So they've already redone the floor in the big hall, and it looks terrific. And hopefully, when this is over, and this isn't something that's going to be an everyday thing, it's only when it's, what, below 32 degrees?
No, our operations for the last two years and for this year will be seven nights a week from the time we start to the time we end.
Right. But what temperatures do they deal with?
Not temperature-dependent.
Not temperature-dependent, okay. So anyway, this is something that is needed, and I'm glad that the Legion agreed to do this, and that the city agreed to offset anything that the Legion needs. So we look forward to it and see what happens after January. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much, Lauren. Appreciate you being here. Madam Clerk, we're going to take up number four now.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Counselor Novoseltsky that the Revere City Council present certificates of appreciation to the following individuals for their upkeep and continuous maintenance of Rumney Marsh burying grounds for the past several years: Bill Reedy, Tom Sullivan, Tony Kapachan, and Lenny Bonasoro.
Congratulations, sir.
Hi, buddy. Go right over here. Thank you, Ira. Well, we were supposed to give out four presentations tonight, but two of them couldn't make it, or one may be late, so we have the two guys that are working here now. Just to give a little background, this is all about the Rumney Marsh Burying Ground. And the Rumney Marsh Burying Ground, for those of you who don't know, has been in existence since 1693. Now, it's the only cemetery in Revere, the only legitimate cemetery. And the last burial, I believe, was in 1939. Many years, it was used as part of the Memorial Day Parade, where the parade would go from Broadway, and down to the cemetery, and then go down to Shirley Ave. There was a big parade, and they had all the organizations involved, just like we used to have on Broadway for Memorial Day and Columbus Day. So over the years, it kind of lost its way, and people were forgetting about it. In 2002, myself and Nick Buah, our former VSO, said, "Who is planting flags at the cemetery for our veterans?" There's 42 veterans going back to the Revolutionary War buried there that weren't being recognized. So Nick and I started to do flags, and then we saw the condition was terrible. The bricks were popping up, gravestones were tipped over, it was just terrible, terrible, terrible. So all the, and then Nick and I did this Rumney Marsh Burying Ground Restoration Committee. And it started with myself, and Nick, and Nick Catnazzo, and Annette Bornstein, and a few other folks, and I'm sorry, I can't remember them offhand. But over the years, Bob Upton got involved, and within the last six or seven years, Brendan O'Brien and his wife Janelle picked up the ball, and are now the chairman of the Burying Ground Committee. But there's always someone behind the scenes that picks up the loose weeds and stuff like that. So these two guys behind me, plus two other guys that sit out here, for the last three or four years, go down there on a regular basis, two, three, four times a week, if there's a branch that's fallen, they'll pick it up, to water the flowers around the opening, paint the front fence. We had water put in there so we can water the flowers, and the neighbors have been great. And many years ago, the kids would go in there, and they'd throw their beer cans in around the gravestones. It just was not nice. But these two guys, and I'll mention Bill Reedy, Tom Sullivan, Lenny Bonasoro, and Tony Kapachan, have stepped up, and I just wanted to recognize them for all the hard work they do, and they do it year-round, even if it's sometimes if it's snowing, they go down there, even though the gate's locked, because we locked the gate from December 1st until March 1st, I think it is. And it's just unbelievable what they can do. So I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize them, thank them, thank Brendan while we're here, and thank Janelle, and some of the other folks at the Historical Society, because what happened was, we didn't need a 501(c)(3) to use to get some grants for the cemetery, and we had to use the IRS code, and they allowed us to do it. So we're kind of part of them now, but we still have a separate banking account. So it's really great that they did this, and the people down at the Historical Society, Toby Pearlstein, again, Brendan and Janelle, Pam Anderson, and many more, a lot more. And this past weekend, they had their reopening after two years of renovations in the establishment. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank Tom again, and Bill Reedy again, and I'm going to read their citation, if I can see it. I just had my eyes done last week. Wait a minute. Yes, I do, matter of fact. I need him to read. Will they blow my eyes out? Oh, that's good. Yeah, thank you. City Revere certificate of appreciation. In recognition of your dedicated service and unwavering commitment to the continuous maintenance and restoration of the Rumney Marsh Burying Ground, one of Massachusetts' most historical, significant cemeteries, by honoring, preserving, and safeguarding our community's historical identity and heritage, special recognition is hereby accorded to Bill Reedy for his hard work. And this certificate is appreciation is presented by the City of Revere, the Revere City Council, on behalf of its citizens, this ninth day of December in the year of our Lord 2024, and the Independence of the United States of America 248, and signed by Ashley Melnick, City Clerk, Anthony Severio Cogliandro, Council President, and offered by Ira Novoseltsky, Board Two Counselor. Bill, that's for you. With the same wording, I make a presentation to Tom Sullivan. And we'll take care of Tony Kapachan and Lenny later on, but thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Guys, want to come up?
Mr. President, point of personal privilege?
State your point, Counselor.
I'd like to just add to the gentleman that just received those awards, both Tom and Bill. As VSO and a veteran, no matter when I picked up the phone, if it was 7:00 in the morning, 7:00 at night, they showed up, and no matter what it was, they're there from 7:00 a.m. picking up fields all over the city. Ira's short speech couldn't have said it any better, but I just want to commend both of those guys, because they are remarkable. Thank you very much.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have to add a little bit to this. Yesterday, I went to the Historic Society, and I was with a friend of mine, Mary Betton. Guess who my tour guide was? Bill. So my point is, my point is that these people, and Tom, these people that do, you know, they may volunteer for the Rumney Marsh Burial Ground, but they volunteer for everything. They're always involved in good stuff, and I can't think of two better things than the burial grounds and the Historic Society Museum, and these people always step up to the plate, and I just wanted to thank them publicly. Thank you.
Next up is calendar item number seven, executive session. The City Council and City Solicitor will meet in executive session for purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss the ongoing litigation status of the eminent domain case regarding the Wonderland site.
Madam Clerk, we could take a roll call?
Shall the City Council enter into executive session for its stated purpose? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Yaramillo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The City Council will now enter into executive session.
We would need everyone to please clear the room, with the exception of Chief-- Counsel, just a reminder, no microphones, no phones, and whatever.
three amendments were proposed to Counselor Jaramillo's motion, including to allow section four of his proposed motion to be left as a standalone motion, standalone item and remain in committee. However, overall, the motion as amended failed in subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. President?
Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you. I first want to thank the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee for meeting and considering this matter. They discussed it for quite a while, and ultimately, they decided that no changes need to be made to the existing ordinance. So, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that the mayor be requested to fill the vacancies in the current Parks Commission as set by ordinance. Roll call, please.
Madam Clerk, when you're ready, let's take a roll call on Counselor Argenzio's motion he just put on the floor, please.
On Counselor Argenzio's motion that the mayor be requested to fill the vacancies of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. President?
Counselor McKenna.
I just would like to know, we took the vote, but I would just like to know how many vacancies there are?
I believe there's five because they're co-terminus with the mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel President, I just need clarification on what is going to be the result of Council Order 24-203. Is the city council placing that on file? Is it being remained in committee? Is it being withdrawn? I'm sorry, excuse me, Council Order 24-139, the Parks Rec, the actual ordinance, that Council Order.
Counselor Jaramillo and Argenzio, that's your motion. What would you, since we just put a substitute or a motion on the floor, do you want to just place this current motion on file?
Sure, that's fine with me as long as Counselor Jaramillo is--
Any objection?
It's fine with me.
Place it on file.
Next up is the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, we met this evening, the zoning Subcommittee, at 5:00 PM. We had several items. The first was 24-330, Judith Palamino, 942 Winthrop Ave, requesting a special permit. The committee voted favorably on this. I would ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review as reported by the zoning Subcommittee? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Next item was 24-331, Daniel Seeker and Andrew Seeker, the Seeker Family Trust, the 21 Green Street, Revere, planned unit development. The committee voted favorably on this. I'd ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of the project review board, and as reported by the zoning Subcommittee? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the planned unit development has been granted.
Next up was 24-332, Edgar Espina, Espina Family Trust, 53 Centennial Ave. There's two, two separate items. Do we want to take these up separate, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it has to be two separate.
Okay, okay, so the first one is terminating the deed restriction. That's 24-332. It was voted out favorably. I'd ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
Shall the city council terminate the deed restriction for 51 Centennial Avenue, that no residential and/or commercial building or structure for habitation and/or occupancy shall be construed, I'm sorry, constructed or placed upon the premises? The foregoing restriction shall be construed as a covenant running with the land is binding upon future grantees, heirs, executors, administrators, assigns, and transferees of said premises or any part or parts thereof. This restriction cannot be altered by any variance. Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
No.
No, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the deed restriction has been terminated.
Next up is 24-333, the same owner, the family trust, 53 Centennial. This is for the special permit. The committee voted out favorably. I'd ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
Shall the zoning Subcommittee grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review, and as reported by the zoning Subcommittee? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
No.
No, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Communications, calendar item number 14, communication from Global Companies LLC, 800 South Street, Waltham, Mass., requesting termination of the Chapter 148 licenses, number 463 at 140 Lee Burbank Highway, and number 381 at 49 Lee Burbank Highway.
We have to take these up separately. Any counselors wish to speak before we? Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, I can speak on this. Global Company just sold their lands, land, to Blackstone Logistics, and this is probably why they're terminating their licenses. So, those, the oil tanks are gonna all be gone, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? If not seeing any, let's take a roll call on the first of the two, please.
Shall the city council terminate Chapter 148 license, number 463, at 140 Lee Burbank Highway? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, that license has been terminated. And shall the city council terminate Chapter 148 license, number 381, at 49 Lee Burbank Highway? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, that license has been terminated. Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Pasquale De Feo as a constable. That's here.
Counselor McKenna, do you have any opposition to voting this in this evening?
I'd really like to bypass this and take it up tonight. Thank you.
On the appointment, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Sir, if you wanted to speak, congratulations.
Congratulations.
What's this, the 10th time, I think?
Calendar item number 16, communication from the city's policy writer and analyst relative to proposed amendments to the noise control ordinance in response to Council Order 24-270.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Claire Isarillo, Solicitor's Office, 281 Broadway. My cover letter covered most of it, but I'll be brief. The mayor approved Counselor Garino Sawaya's motion in September, and I worked on investigating what we could do better with Officer Sean Randall, as well as some members of our ISD Department. The proposal before you tonight results from work with Michael Wells, Louis Cabanero, Sean Randall, and other members of the Police Department. The changes are small, there's not a whole lot of them, but a lot of work has been done on the police side to update their ticketing, as well as update their officers who are patrolling, as well as the MN rec, I don't know how to say the acronym correctly, but the 911 Center, when they receive calls as well. So, whatever gets approved by this council eventually will be handed back to the Police Department for them to move forward with amending their internal protocols, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I do request that this is moved to a public hearing.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
First, I'd like to thank Claire Isarillo for all the work that you've done to help me with this. I know this was a really tedious project that you got stuck with. I support all the changes to prohibit dumpster operation after 8:00 PM instead of 9:00, as well as the Police Department creating a protocol for dispatching calls related to noise disturbances, and updating the physical noise violation tickets that the police have. However, I do have a problem with contacting the animal, the animal control officer, because he is unavailable on the weekends. He only has certain hours, and we need to find a different way to implement, to be implemented to address these issues. Also, I have two amendments to your proposal. The first amendment would be street sales. That is Section 9.08.100D be amended by deleting the words "9:00" and inserting in place thereof the word "dusk." So, the people who come around soliciting, it has to be, they have to stop at dusk time. In the summer, it'll be later; in the winter, it'll be around 5:00-ish. Then, the construction part of it, Section 9.08.100, that's Section G, be amended by deleting the subsection in its entirety and inserting in place thereof the following new language: "Construction, drilling, or demolition. Operating or permitting the operation of any tools or equipment used in construction, drilling, or demolition work between the hours of 7:00 PM and 8:00 AM. The following days, Monday through Thursday, between 6:00 PM, on Friday, and 9:00 PM on Saturday." I'm sorry, 9:00 AM on Saturday, I apologize. "On Monday, or any other time of the holiday, in such a manner as to be plainly audible from the lot line of the lot on which such activity is located, except for the emergency work of public service utilities, or by special permit issued by the inspector of building and causing thereof is a violation of this chapter." Subsection F shall not apply to the use of domestic power tools as provided for in subsection L of the section. And I also have a map, Ashley, which I'm going to give to you, of the dates, the days of the week, and the hours. Thank you. Everything is in writing.
So, this will be ordered to a public hearing on the 27th, as amended?
Mr. President, through you, may I request one more comment?
Absolutely.
I just want to say that I hear your concerns loud and clear, and I'll take back the issues with the animal control officers, see if that's something that the police can look into, maybe with the budget coming up, getting more staff, getting weekend staff, something like that. And I will bring the proposed amendments back to ISD and our police so they're fully informed when that public hearing does come up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the city council approve a resolution in support of the revitalization of the Winthrop Ave Fire Station.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we've talked about this for a couple of years. Right now, the Beachmont Fire Station is not being-- Right now, the Beachmont Fire Station is not being renovated at all, but it's coming. I just wanna give you a little information about the Beachmont Fire Station. The Beachmont Fire Station was designated and registered as a historical building with the Massachusetts Historical Commission by the Revere Historical Commission in June of 1977. Because of its architectural unique to the design, which distinguishes it as an irreplaceable culture and historical landmark in the city. The preservation of the Beachmont Fire Station is critical to maintain the architectural diversity and historical integrity of Revere. The repurposing of the Beachmont Fire Station as a community art center would not only preserve its historical significance, but also provide a meaningful space for artistic expression. Mayor Keefe and the Planning and Community Development Department has been instrumental in starting the reservations. Starting in the spring, they'll, they're gonna do, redo the roof and the front of the structure. I'm asking the City of Revere in collab, to work in collaboration with local historians, preservationists, community leaders, and art organizations to secure funding and resources necessary for preserving this historical structure for the length of the time that it's needed to get it up and running. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 18. Motion presented by Councillor Garino Sawaya that the mayor be requested to donate a sufficient number of AED defibrillators to all veterans organizations in the City of Revere to be installed at the American Legion, Beachmont VFW, and the VFW Matola Post.
Councillor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. After speaking to numerous veterans who attended the 11th Annual Thanksgiving Dinner at Casa Lucia, I realized that installing AED devices at all veterans organizations in the City of Revere is a crucial step to safeguard the health and well-being of veterans in the broader community. Veterans often face elevated risk of cardiac events due to health challenges, such as heart disease, which is common among older adults and those who have experienced physical and emotional stress during military service. Veteran organizations also serve as community hubs, hosting gatherings like the Thanksgiving Dinner where the likelihood of medical emergencies, including sudden cardiac arrest, may increase, which we saw happen that night. Unfortunately, we lost a member of our community. Since survival rates for SCA significantly improved with AEDs are used within the first few minutes, having these devices readily available ensures a swift response while waiting for emergency medical services to arrive. This is especially vital for the aging members of these organizations who are more susceptible to heart-related conditions. By equipping veterans organizations with AEDs, the city not only enhances public safety, but also demonstrates a strong commitment to protecting the lives of those who have served our nation. Since I have put in the motion, I've spoken to Mayor Keefe, and he has wholeheartedly agreed to helping purchase the AED defibrillators for the veterans' buildings. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a great motion. If we're going to add them, I do believe all posts already do have the defibrillators. I could be wrong.
Councillor, thank you councillor. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I support the motion wholeheartedly. However, some, some of us are trained in this and some aren't. And if we're gonna put them in, I wanna make sure that people get certified in CPR, because you can't just use these, or you can use them, but you're not as effective if you're not trained. So, I'd like to make that as a condition to the motion if the maker agrees with that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just a point, the American Legion already has one, so I don't think we have to put one there. We probably have to put two at the Matola Post, one upstairs, one downstairs, and one at the Beachmont VFW. That's my input, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Garino Sawaya?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. We need to put one at Beachmont and two at the Matola Post. That's what was requested. And the city does offer training, and Adrian Maguire, who's wonderful at teaching all of us, and training for CPR and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Permission to speak from the chair? Do we know what this is gonna cost?
I'll address all of those.
Thank you.
Adrian Sacca-Maguire, Public Health Department, 281 Broadway. So, since October of 2023, I have worked with my department to transition all city buildings to new ZOL AED defibrillators. We have 20 new defibrillators that are in service, and we picked ZOL partly because they are a little bit better in the weather, and we have two of them outside. I'll just tell you for the public's information where they're located. The Senior Center, City Hall has two, the American Legion has two, and if it's two, it would be upstairs and downstairs. DPW Building has one, Robert J. Haas Wellness Center has two, the Library has two, the Parking Office has one, Griswold Park at St. Mary's has one, Recreation Department has one, the Historical Museum has one, Recreation Department wants, the Harry Del Rosso Stadium has one, the old food hub on Winthrop Ave. has one, the Quality Inn has one, and not that it's a city building, but it has our migrant population there with health issues. The McKinley School has one, our Public Health Office has one, 3 V. Street Sudie Office has one. And they are, so here's the costs. So, we did buy those 20, we bought them, and you have a paper in front of you, some city funding when we had some extra money left at the end of last year. We got a grant, a firehouse grant for 11 of them, and Local 22 gave us one for the parking office. The maintenance is, it costs $225 per year per AED. So, right now, our bill is $4,500 a year just for maintenance. We did do trainings, oh, and so they get serviced twice a year and on a schedule. We did trainings for all employees. We offered it. 55 employees this year got trained in AED use, and we also did NACAN training at the same time. We have budgeted 20 employees to get CPR training through, in City Hall. We, we trained 14 employees. Hopefully, we'll continue that, that project. We're actually working on a community improvement in training, working with the Red Cross, potentially Cataldo Ambulance, and the MRC, which is our volunteer agency, to do some trainings with us, because we're trying to offer it in more languages than just English. Our growth plan, obviously, we have the two already in the Legion. We have already spoken to the Beachmont VFW to put one there. Casa Lucia, we will speak to them. What we have is, and I don't wanna say they're old, but right now, in our possession, we have ones that we took out of other locations, because I wanted all of the city locations to have the same ones right now. And so, the same AEDs that are in all of the schools will be placed in the Beachmont VFW and the Casa Lucia. We can offer training at the same time for those people in the buildings who, who wanna be trained. I mean, this is, this is a great opportunity to remind the public to get certified in CPR, first aid, AEDs. AE training, like, we did it to employees. It was not a whole CPR class, but we wanted everyone to be familiar. So, get certified, save a life. Any questions?
Yes, if I may, well, I have permission. So, this number looks like we have 10 AEDs that we service in the city right now?
We have 20, because some buildings have two.
Okay, so that 225 covers the cost for both?
Of each AED.
For both services, okay.
For both services.
So, the reason I'm harping on this, I'm in full support of putting AEDs wherever we need them, but by ordinance, if this is a cost of over $5,000, it has to go to ways and means for a financial analysis. So, that's why I asked about the money. So, if we're at $4,500 a year now, how many AEDs are we gonna be adding? It looks like if we add?
Three.
That puts us over?
Which we don't have to purchase, because we have. And will those buildings incur the $225 each per year? Because this is a, this is a...
Well, that's, I would, I would say then we don't need to, because we're own, if we already have them, we're just paying to service them. So, it doesn't have to go to ways and means unless somebody else thinks otherwise. Councillor Garino Sawaya?
I know we, the time has lapsed for public speaking, but Bobby is here from one of the veterans' buildings, and he said that they will take care of the costs, just as long as we can provide them with the AEDs. If that's, if he can speak, he's sitting here now. I don't wanna challenge the chair, but I would like for him to speak, if that's okay.
I'm sorry, we had public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So, if the councillor wants to overrule me, she has to challenge the chair to get you to speak.
Thank you.
Well, you have to, you guys have to vote against the rules, which I'm following. So?
Motion to suspend the rule?
No, it's not about suspension rules.
Would you like the AEDs?
Yes.
Okay, enough said.
And you're gonna pay for the maintenance. Yeah, let's not break the rules.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you. Are you gonna be offering anything? Because I'd really like to, I was gonna go to North Shore Community College to get certified in, because it's been years for me. Are you gonna offer anything for the employees in the recent months?
Yeah, we don't have anything scheduled yet, but I am just waiting to hear that it was actually, I haven't seen it in the budget, but if it is, word will get out to you.
Councillor Novoselfsky?
One quick question. How much does each AED cost to buy?
The new ones that are up now are $1,500 each.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councillors? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 19. Motion presented by Councillor Agenzio that the mayor be requested to allocate Chapter 90 funds or other available funding source to repave South Furnace Street and install new sidewalks and curbing. This is one of the only streets that intersect with Park Ave. that does not have curbing and finished sidewalks. Councillor Zambudo is recorded as recused.
Councillor Agenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, as I stated in the motion, I think there's 27 streets that intersect Park Avenue, there's only two that don't have formal sidewalks with curb. The street is in deplorable condition, so if they could add that to their list. I spoke to Superintendent Shamela, and I believe it's on the list for the spring, but this would just reinforce it.
Thank you councillor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20. Motion presented by Councillor Haas. The mayor requests the appropriate department to notify any utility company or cable internet provider to require any employee or representatives going door-to-door to carry company identification badges or business cards, so residents are able to confirm whether or not an individual is from the company they say they're from.
Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this has been an issue for some time in this city. Just last week, I had a couple instances up in my neighborhood in Ward 3 of a gentleman who was saying that he works for Verizon, and it was well after 6 o'clock at night. No identification. He was a nice, nice man. I had a nice conversation with him about Verizon and Comcast, but he had no ID, no card to give me. He was just walking around with a little tablet, going door-to-door, looking at the houses. I don't know what he was typing in. My only concern is that there's a lot of families up in my neighborhood, there's a lot of seniors up in my neighborhood. And the day after I put this motion in, I had another gentleman walk up to me as I was getting out of my car with my son, who was looking at the house, looking at the house next door, talking about the siding, talking about the improvements that they could make, the company, and how they just did a job on Carlson Ave. He asked me if the owner was home. I said no, and I said, "I'll pass along a card if you have a card on you." And he did not have a card. He said he would drop a card off later that day at 4 o'clock, 4:30. He never came back and dropped a card. So, I think this is a big concern in Revere, it's a big safety issue in the neighborhoods, and if we could alert these companies that walk around the neighborhoods, whether they are utility companies, whether it's Xfinity, Verizon, I think it would be a plus for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Haas, I've had the same situation happen in Ward 1. Last week, I had a man with no, he had identification, but he wouldn't show it to me, and I asked him what he was doing. A lot of these people that are going door-to-door have fake identifications. It's so easy to fake an identification. The best thing that the public can do is call National Grid. If they can get a card from whoever's at their door, or to get a card and call, because, you know, there's a lot of people that are faking a lot of things, and so I just wanna put that out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to amend this motion. I already spoke to Councillor Haas about it, to include an additional request for strict enforcement of door-to-door sales times. So, like I said in the other motion for the noise ordinance, it needs to stop at dusk. So, once it gets dark out, they need to be off the streets, because I've heard many residents, especially elderly residents, who are afraid to open their door, and they continuously come back if they don't answer the door. So, it needs to stop at dusk. Thank you.
Does this apply to political candidates as well? Councillor Janino?
Just for the record, the Police Department does license, anyone going door-to-door, and if they're not, they don't see the license, you have to call the station up, the front desk, and tell them, "People are going door-to-door," and they'll get them off the street. The license, a hundred bucks apiece, full background check on them all. No one's exempt from the licenses. Cable's not exempt from it, solar panels not exempt from it. As long as they're selling something, going door-to-door, they have to have a license. They have to go to the station and register, "I'll be in this neighborhood from this time to this time." So, just call the station up, eliminate half the stuff.
Mr. President?
Thank you councillor. Councillor Haas?
Thank you. I know that's, they have to, you know, register for the licenses or whatever for the day or what their, what neighborhoods they're gonna be in. They're supposed to do that. The problem is they're not doing it, and we don't know who these people are, walking around the streets knocking on doors. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21. Motion presented by Councillors Silvestri and McKenna that the mayor requests Mastod to install temporary lighting at the crosswalk at the intersection of Winthrop Avenue and Washburn Avenue until a permanent solution is installed. This motion is submitted in the interest of public safety due to, due to the lack of lighting at this location. Councillor Zambudo is recorded as recused.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. If anyone's been in that location since Beachmont Roast Beef has come down, it is extremely dark at night. I spoke with Tom O'Brien, and he does have a solution in the works with the T to light up the, the bridge, but we know that may not happen. But right now, we need either DOT, or the city ourselves needs to put a temporary light on the pole at Washburn, because we have residents that use that street coming off the T, and it's dangerous at night. So, that's it.
Thank you councillor. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think this is a great motion. Thank you, Councillor Silvestri, for putting me on this. But there is a bus stop right before this Washburn Ave, and if the bus is there and people are going around the bus, cars are not gonna be able to see pedestrians. So, this is crucial. On Mills, Mill, on Mill Street, we have, on the corner of Mill and Beach, we have a floodlight that lights up the whole corner there, and maybe National Grid in the city. I know, because we have to pay for it, but maybe we could put a floodlight there for now. now. All they have to do is attach it to a pole. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion. Also, there are two heavily trafficked crosswalks right there, and sometimes when the cars are, you know, they're stopped at the light, people sneak in between the cars, but this is a great motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Councilors Silvestri and McKenna that the mayor requests the Director of Public Health to provide the city council and residents with information on the city's trash removal best practices to minimize rodent activity. There appears to be an increase in rodent activity over the last several months, and educating the public is a step in solving the city's rodent problem.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just remember a few years back when we went through the education plan, the new barrels. I think since then, the barrels, the rodents have figured a way through the barrels, and I think that a re-education, again, to the city and residents is needed. I've seen an uptick in rodents, and I think it's a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that construction also brings out a lot of rodents. And I know I had, we were having Winthrop Ave. done over for two years, and I never had mice in my house, and I had mice in my house. Everybody on the street did. So I think that's got a lot to do with the increase of the rodent activities. But the rodents now, the rats are eating right through the barrel, the plastic. Yeah, so, yeah, we have to, we have to start, again, educating people about their trash. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Yarmio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for this ordinance, this motion. So I really like this, and if at all possible, I know the counselor would be amenable to this, if we can make sure that in this plan that we're asking the mayor to work on, that we're looking at, in addition to our current rodent program, other rodent diversion alternatives, like, I know there's rodent birth control out there now and stuff like that, because I know we had this conversation earlier this year, and Counselor McKenna, Counselor woman McKenna mentioned that, you know, there's a balance here between the wildlife and whatnot. And while personally, I freaking hate the things, and I have the most lethal venom things that are, you know, whatever it is, that gets them out of my house or not in my house ever, you know, I think we do have to strike that balance, so I don't know if the counselor would be amenable to that.
Sure thing.
Did that, so are you saying further that the city...
Explore multiple rodent diversion...
...rodent extermination, or is...
Extermination and diversion.
Mr. President, through you to Counselor.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. I just want to say, if we can use a less invasive rat poison, it still does the job, but a less invasive rat poison, so we won't hurt the wildlife that eats the rats.
And whatever, and whatever other, I mean, there's, I know my dad works at Mass General, and they're bringing rodent-catching dogs now. There's keenets.
Well, there's, I mean, if we just allowed nature to do their job, the, you know, hawks, the owls, I mean, it would be fine, but we don't, because we're killing them off. Thank you.
Counselor Yarmio's amendment that further that the Public Health Department look into less invasive diversion and extermination tactics for rodents.
If I may, just, you know, I know it's, I hear a little laughter about this, but we have household pets dying, we have dogs dying in neighborhoods in Ward 3. So I'm sure it's happening in other places in the city. A rat eats the poison, a dog eats the rat, or a bird comes down and eats it, so we need to do something. If my dogs passed away because of this, I would be furious. Okay, so on the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered. There is no further business, and this meeting is adjourned. We will see you on the 16th.